All right, welcome everybody to the zoning board of appeals meeting for November fourteenth. I guess let's establish our quorum here. I'll take a roll call. Elizabeth Dwyer Leonard.
Here.
Tom Swaim.
Here.
And Robbie Faya, I'm here as well. And our normal chair, Theo Kindermans is out of town, so I will chair the meeting tonight. And it's seven o'clock. So we can get to our first item, which is the application of Gregory P. King for a special permit under zoning by law section seven one three, seven one five and eleven six. For previously approved legally nonconforming detached garage at four forty Main Street. Is anyone here or the applicant?
Here I am.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, so would you like to sort of present what your?
Sure.
Requested.
Is it okay if I sit here or do I need to be on TV?
Yeah.
The camera picks you up.
Okay, good. So I'll give you the thirty second overview. Eleven years ago, I got the special permit. I just went ahead and built the garage. I got permits along the way, framing, electrical, there's no plumbing, there's no, no. Uh, there's been some controversy about what this space is. It's a simple space above a garage. I went ahead and built it. Then all of a sudden, one day I picked up the special permit and I realized it said. Uh, this is not effective until you. Um, file it with the.
Registry of deeds.
Registry of deeds.
Mm-hmm.
And. Um, furthermore, it said I wouldn't get a C of O. Um, until I provided as built. Now. That's sort of an aside, I suppose. I can ignore that because I don't think I'm ever going to get a C of O on a garage. Okay, I don't know if you guys are in that area that you could comment on that, but nevertheless, um. What I'm looking to do here is just. Sort of refresh the permission so I can get it filed and recorded as part of my deed because I think it's a more. Elegant way to legitimize the garage. Um. That's my story. I'm happy to provide any more details. In you.
Fair enough. I have one question. There were a couple of conditions in the special permit that was originally granted. I think something about fire systems and do you, do you know if that was all?
No idea. I saw something about it had to be built, um. Proof to the building commissioner demonstrating the new structure. It's all fire resistant. Um. Now, of course, that says prior to this issuance of the C of O. Now, if I'm not. Can I get a C of O on this? Then is that sort of a moot point? You know, I'm not a lawyer, but. Does that even matter if I'm not going for a C of O?
Okay, so it's my, it's my understanding. You, you do get a, a certificate. Of occupancy to, to occupy that, that space, or at least. Um, if it's not called a C of O, they do a final building.
Um, yes.
Sign off.
That's right. And maybe that's what they, maybe the spirit of this was.
And so does the fire department. They are required to do a final sign off as well.
So. My review of the building of the jacket that they keep upstairs. There was a lot of question about how much this was ever. Signed off on or not, you know, I, I could see some permits, the framing, the electrical were signed off on the, um. Into those permits, but. I'm happy to do whatever I need to do. To. Get this.
Is the construction currently completed?
Oh, it was eleven years ago.
Oh, okay.
And it looks fantastic. I don't know. I think the photos were a little fuzzy, but you know, it really fits in the neighborhood very nicely and, and you know, so. Anyway, but yeah, it's all built.
Since we're renewing the basic permit that you got years ago, I would suggest that we keep the same conditions, even though.
It's probably.
In a sense, you've already complied.
Yeah.
But in order to complete the project, I agree with what you really should stop by the building inspector. Just make sure whatever other papers you need. That you have, where it come to catch you is when you go to sell that property someday, if some lawyers paying attention, they'll say, wait a minute. You don't have the right permits or the right coverages. So it will just make your life a lot easier.
Right.
To get that, then they'll give you the whatever certificates or permits you need.
And who will do that?
The building inspector.
Upstairs?
Uh, yes.
So more than, more than likely, they, um. The, the building permit itself expired. Um, so you may have to just file a building permit and then have them do the final sign off. I don't, that's a conversation to have with the building commissioner. All created.
Um, all right, I've had some conversations with her and they've kind of gone. Uh. A little inclusive, let's just say.
I'll help.
Okay.
Um, so I mean, the, the findings that the board made eleven years ago were, you know. They're, they're still valid and the structure was built in accordance with the approved plans.
The bylaws, basically the bylaws same, right?
Correct. Those, yeah, yeah. So the, those sections for, um, nonconforming, you know, seven one five. Um, back then, the building commissioner at that time included seven one two, which is nonconforming. Um, structure, seven one three, uh, and seven one five. Um, so it's. They, they covered all the bases back then. So, um, but to the conditions, I, I. I think if you just maintain the, the same two conditions, um, and then we can work. Um, towards what process the building commissioner wants.
Yep.
To have him go through to satisfy those two conditions.
The two conditions being the, uh.
The as built, um, yeah.
As built.
The as built and then, um, yes, and the. Um, more than likely at, at this point in time, um, the building commissioner. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know what proof he's going to require. Is the inside of the grass walls finished?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm not sure what, you know, what he's going to require, you know, from the fire department, you know, they may. Um, I'm not sure what they're going to require, but we'll figure it out.
And then, you know, the condition is based on the building code. I don't know if the building code is changed.
Um, I, I, so I don't, I, um, so. My understanding and, um, Mr. Swaim can correct me, but, um, the structure was. He pulled, pulled a building permit, got permits for different things, got them signed off. The structure has been there for more than ten years.
Yeah.
He doesn't need to go through this.
Right, right.
Oh, um, because of statute of limitations. Right, so, um. We were in agreement. This is when you go to sell it, this is the, you know, the cleaner way. So, um, I don't think from a building code standpoint. Um, he's, he's required to, to do any upgrades based on the building code. Um, so this would just be, um, you know. And, and it may be, we may be able to find, you know, some evidence that, you know, the fire department did. Go out there and look at it. I, I don't know, or, you know.
Yeah, it seems to me that's involved in the framing permits and that sort of thing.
Yes, so if the framing permit, you know, got, did get final sign off, the fire department may be satisfied with that. Good.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Uh, open it up to the public, any public comment? Right, I see none. So I'll close public comment. Um. You know, seems to me that, uh, we're sort of correcting oversight and assisting the citizens, so.
In growing agreement.
Uh.
I'll be happy to make a motion.
Yeah, make a motion.
I move to accept the application of Gregory, Gregory P. King. For a special permit pursuant to section seven point one point two, seven point one point three, seven point one point five and eleven point six. For to, uh, for the expansion, uh. To reconstruct or construct a nonconforming detached garage. At four forty Main Street in the residential B district. As shown on the proposed building plan dated August twenty seventh, twenty thirteen. And architect plans dated June twenty, twenty thirteen. With the decision to include the findings and conditions contained. In the special permit granted to Gregory P. King on October twenty four, twenty one, uh, twenty thirteen.
Thank you, Tom.
Wow, thanks, boss. Second.
All right, let's, uh, take a vote. All those in favor, Ms. Dwyer Leonard?
Hi.
Ms. Swaim.
Aye.
And Chair both aye, acting Chair both aye. Uh, so you all fit. Okay, and we have passed seven oh five, so we can open the, uh. Next item, uh, the application of Kevin Whelan on behalf of Christopher and Kristen Holmes. For a special permit under zoning by law sections four two 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 and eleven six for a nine hundred ninety eight square foot detached. Additional dwelling unit on a lot with less than eighty thousand square feet at four fourteen Powder Mill Road, uh, and I think. I see some from, uh, back to use to present here. So can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Tim O'Reilly. I'm with backyard ADUs, um, and we're really excited tonight to present to you guys. Um, an application under four point two point two point two for a detached accessory dwelling unit. Um, granting, you know, relief above the seven fifty, um, but smaller than a thousand square feet. Um, it's another one. Um, here in town where we're bringing families together. Uh, grandparents are moving into the backyard, um, to live, uh, and the same. Property is their kids and their grandkids. So I'll, um, share my screen. We can look at it a bit together here. Um, there's a couple of details I want to go over with you, and then I'm looking forward to answering any questions that you have. So this detached, um, accessory dwelling unit will be in the back of the property. You can sort of see, um, the shape of this lot. Um, it is, um, smaller than the current required. Um, lot size, so that is the first part of our application here under section A. Um, and then part two here is being this thousand square feet. Um, the plan you're seeing here is our approved. Um, Board of Health septic permit. Um, so this will be in the backyard. Um, tucked along the side lot line, um, shielded from the road. Um, and it's going to be a great way to bring these families together. The detail I want to highlight for you, um, will be how, how we calculate the thousand square feet. Uh, we do have, um, our roof line here. We're totally conforming in terms of. Heights and all those requirements, um, but what we do have here is a first floor. And then, um, a mezzanine area as well. And under the code, um, we do have a section here. That has more than six feet, eight inches of head height, so that is counting. Um, in terms of our calculation of floor area, so between our first floor size. And our second floor, um, mezzanine area, we are below that thousand square foot. Um. Um, part of the bylaw, um, you will note there is an attic half up here. This section will also be below six foot eight. Um, we'll have all of our mechanicals up there within our building envelope. Um, it'll also serve as some nice storage. So I wanted to highlight this section for you. Um, I know this has been important. How do we get to our full calculation? Um, I, I could go through all, all the details here, but I'm sure you guys are, are very familiar at this point with. Um, this section of the bylaw, and I'm looking forward to any questions that, that you may have.
Well, thank you for explaining the, the calculation there because that was going to be one of my questions, but you've answered it. Um, did I also see that there's, um, an EV charger planned on the?
Correct. Yep, and that's, that's part of code here, um, you know, adopting that, that higher, um, energy code here, so.
Great.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, confirming that there's not a basement to this dwelling?
Correct, yep. Uh, we're on a, an eighteen inch crawl space.
Okay.
And then, uh. You mentioned you, you had the plan for the septic. Has that been approved by Board of Health already, or are we still, do we need some sort of? Condition about?
We've been totally approved. Here's our letter right here. Um, so we're approved, submitted and approved.
Okay. All right, uh, and I know we did receive, uh, letter of support from the public, um. Uh, apparently from the neighbor, I think, but, uh, I'll open it up if there's any other public comments or questions here.
Yeah, I do. My name is Rob Miltzer. It's my wife Sharon. We're at thirty Jenny Dugan Road. We are back into the left of this. We have, um. Our property is a very, very long driveway. Our house is four hundred fifty feet setback from the road. It's built onto a cliff over the marsh that's on. Jenny Dugan, and we have what might be the darkest and lightest house lot in the town of Concord right now. And we are concerned about the impacts on it. So we've reached out to our neighbors, of course, and we asked them some fairly basic questions. And they've been very forthcoming in, in the answers. One of the things they've informed us is. That all of the exterior lights are going to be dark sky compliant fixtures. That there's going to be a mini split compressor that's relatively quiet, that the roof runoff is going to go into a dry well as opposed to going down. On a sculpt property towards the marsh, and also there's no solar panels, um, for this particular project. So we are confident that's not going to be an impact on our particular property, but what I am asking. And I've made this clear to my neighbors is I'm hoping that these four points. Can be included in your particular order that you issue, allowing the special permit because we do support it. But we just want to make sure that if there are going to be changes on those four points in the future, that that would have to be brought before the board, uh, for those changes. And I have the list of what they are from, the actual email from them I'd like to hand out.
Okay.
But I want to be clear, we do support this. We think it's great. Welcome our new neighbors. I think it's going to be nice having them there, but we just want to make sure that our place stays as quiet and dark as it is.
Um, I do not think it's within the board's jurisdiction to, um, not. To prohibit somebody from having solar.
I do believe you can do that. I did check that. I'm, I'm not aware. I did look that up. So you might want to check it, but in fact, because of the impact we've been seeing on solar panels in close proximity of property lines. You can request that they just come back for a special permit to do it. I think you can put that as a condition. We're not saying you can ban it, but I'm saying at the time they do it, we don't know what those rules are going to be.
What's your source of authority on that?
Just from my own personal experience working with solar panel companies, that's what we do.
But not, that's a two things. Not, no code though.
There isn't, but there's also nothing that prohibits it, but the issue that we've been seeing is that when time goes by and someone comes back ten or fifteen years later on a permit. Those rules and regulations are changing pretty quickly as the technology changes. So we just need to make sure that when and if it does become an issue down the road, that we know what we're dealing with.
Can we, I do, I do not believe the board that has the ability to prohibit somebody. From installing solar panels. Um, in fact, the building code requires homes to be built solar ready. Mm-hmm. Um. So I.
This home will be in compliance with that.
Correct, but I don't believe under the ADU regulation that, that it actually applies to the unsold dwelling.
Well, sorry.
I think it's, I think it applies, that applies to domain houses. I don't believe in the ADU that this actually does. Uh, allow for that without it being reviewed. You can make it a condition for an auxiliary.
I don't think there's a separate building code though for ADUs.
No, there isn't, but there has certainly been substantial question about future use of solar panels as technology changes. Whether or not each of these can be reviewed. I don't think the ADU issue has been suggested on it, but my thought is that if you put it in there as a condition. We challenge later, or at least we have the opportunity to discuss it if it comes up.
Could, could we, from what you know, could we say? Solar panels as required by permit or permitted by permit?
Um.
I believe our, our, our angle here is really just that our size is, um, part A. Um, the nonconforming lot size and part B, um, our size. We've obviously, we've reached out to the neighbors ahead of time. You got one letter of support. Um, there are other, um. Aboutters, I believe, are, are here tonight, um, and you folks, thank you for coming, and, uh, we have been cooperative in answering all questions along the way. Um.
Did your project, uh, assume any solar panels at this time?
No.
Okay. Then I don't think we have to include it because if someday they want to do solar panels. They'd have to check with the building departments if they need a permit.
And I'd, I'd encourage as, you know, the Affordable Homes Act has passed and rules are getting rewritten, you know, the town can look at how they want to make those adjustments, but at this time. With this application as the rules are.
Um, so I, I, I am a hundred percent confident that the Affordable Homes Act and the changes that are. Um, going to be required for ADUs, um, does not address. Keeping people from putting solar panels, you know, um, anywhere. Um. In a residential setting for single family dwellings and whether they want. That the single family dwelling could put solar panels on a garage if they wanted. Um, I, um, I, you can. Make a request of the building commissioner to provide his input. You can even request from town council, but, um, I. Uh, it is my understanding, um, that to prohibit somebody from putting solar panels is not. Within the jurisdiction of this board. I would love to get it from town council, just we have this in front of us, we can land the plane on it and, and be sure, or the building inspector, whoever you think is better.
I don't think we need to go to town council on this one, based on what we just heard, in addition to which, the plans. Don't show any solar panels.
Yeah.
And if somebody they want to.
The social permit is not required for solar panels. Anybody can pull a building permit, put solar panels. Um, okay. So, I, I can, I can. I can ask town council or I can ask, I can ask the building commissioner, um.
Just hate to see us delay. This application based on what you told us.
That would be my wish as well.
Really?
Is there a way to get an answer without delaying the application? No, okay.
Okay, can I, can I ask what you feel the detriment? Would be from solar panels being on that?
Yeah, we're doing a lot of, a lot of litigation right now, damaged property caused by. Cleaning solvents and chemicals, by light glare, by heat, by things of that nature, and. The technology is evolving and changes, and I think eventually they're going to be very safe and very clean, but right now we don't know where that technology is going. My point on this is, is that someday this house gets sold ten, fifteen years down the road. That we are lobbying pretty intensively right now for changes and when solar panels are going to be allowed as a matter of right. I simply am asking to have it noted that in the event down the road, so it wouldn't affect this particular project today for what they're doing. That they would have to come back and potentially and have that approved, uh, because technology should not be grandfathered in at that point, and the grandfathering is not going to be there. There's a lot, there's a lot of lobbying going on about this issue right now. This is why I'm concerned about it.
I still do not think it's within the board's jurisdiction.
Yeah, um, yeah, yeah.
Ready to follow that advice. Yeah, I, I think I am as well, you know, I think we have to weigh. You know, potential detriment against the benefits of, um, the project in front of us, uh. Uh, and I think, you know, we can, obviously there's a buy right ADU that can be, be built here. Well, actually the lot size is too small, but.
Yeah.
Um. You know, I, 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 I think. You can have a buy right ADU of significant size on most. Conforming lots and. They can have solar on them and there's, there's really no mechanism for us to block that. Uh. But, you know, I, I, I do have a question about the. The roof runoff, because if Dale was here, I think he'd be asking about the increase in impervious area here and that. It sounds like the runoff is planned to be infiltrated, um. From the, from new unit.
Yep, um, every project we do, um, you know, it depends a little bit on this. Every site's different in the topography, but we will have a dry well here. So all of our roof runoff will go into a French drain, uh, which then goes into a dry well.
Okay.
I am a hundred percent confident that the board can require, um, the roof runoff to go to the dry well. I'm also a hundred percent confident the board can require dark sky compliant, um, exterior light fixtures.
Um, in terms of the mini split compressor, um. There again, you know, somebody needs to upgrade their system and I'm not sure we can regulate what. What AC they put on their. Dwelling unit, but I don't know if you have a view on that at all.
Um, I. These are incredibly quiet. I don't have like the engineer spec in front of me, but, you know, if you compare it to like the sound of a passing car. Uh, it's very quiet.
Again, I mean, I, I, I understand the issues and the concerns, but from a jurisdictional standpoint. I do not think it's within the board's jurisdiction to require somebody to purchase a particular type of air conditioner unit. Um, you know, the, the. Um, a mini split regardless of, of any kind or an ADU. Um, is different than when you're looking at a commercial project that has. Chillers, condensers, or, you know, restaurant, a large office where, you know, it may be on the roof and. Um, you know, the noise levels are different, um, uh, you know. A one mini split for an ADU, I think the board would have. Um, you, you can address noise, um, um, I. But I don't think you can require somebody to purchase a particular kind.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'd be comfortable with that condition, you know, I would hope that. Your concerns are sort of addressed by what is actually going on.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with what they're currently proposing.
Right.
They've satisfied us on what's going in now. I don't have any problem with this. We support this. I'm worried about ten years down the road, this is sold or something like that. If someone comes in. Wants to make substantial changes in terms of light, noise, drainage, uh, solar panels. That because it's a, it's a nonconforming lot, I don't believe as a matter of right, they can make those changes to this permit. That's why I've asked for these conditions. I do believe you have the jurisdiction. I've been a lawyer for thirty years. I've never seen anything that would limit, and I certainly haven't on the ADU. It would limit you for some future time, simply asking them to come back and clarify those before they make those changes.
Yeah, um.
That building is going to be there forever, so that's, that's, you know, that's the concern.
Right, and I think we're, our permit is to allow the building.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Versus, you know, regulating uses that I think aren't really what our. Role under the bylaws intended for us to regulate, and I could declare. Going to be violating some kind of noise or drainage or, um, other issue ten years from now. Then if they trip something, they got to get a permit for it, and if it doesn't trip anything, I'm not sure that we sitting here today can reach forward and. Uh, impose some kind of regulation that wouldn't otherwise exist. So that's sort of where I am, um. So.
Agreed. I don't, I don't see anything that would give us the authority to do that. And there is tort, I mean, there's tort law if there is something that becomes a nuisance or inconvenient. So. So I think the conditions that we can do with the light and the, um, the drainage, we should.
Certainly. Um. Any other public comment? I think, right, I think those, uh. Those make sense, yeah. Any, is there any other public comment?
Nobody has their hand up.
Thanks, and, uh, I think a close public comment, and, you know, we certainly appreciate you bringing up these concerns and, um. You know, I think we feel sensitive then, but. In a way, sort of feel like we're powerless to.
No, I, I appreciate that. Um, but I also, I also think there's a great deal of concern about ADUs generally. That one of the characteristics is preserving the neighborhood as it exists.
Yep.
Um, and it's something that you don't want to be in a situation of the decades down the road. Of being sorry, we've, so we've gone down there if we can control some of the problems ahead of time.
Yeah, and I think this board has certainly seen some of that, and we have, I think, turned away some ADUs that. Have went a little too far and.
Yes.
Um, and as I said, I think that's all still shaping out and. You know, there's hope for that and hope, I think, for the, um, for the solar technology that it does. That it does get clean.
Yeah.
Um, so any other discussion or do you think we're ready to?
Nope.
Ready to make a motion? Move to, uh, grant. The application of Kevin Whelan for a special permit. To construct an additional dwelling unit. Containing nine hundred ninety eight square feet at four hundred fourteen Powder Mill Road. Pertuent to section four point two point two point two and eleven point six of the zoning by law. All as shown on the feasibility site plan for four one four Powder Mill Road Concord Mass by Backyard. Uh, what do we have?
ADUs.
ADUs LLC, dated July, uh, eighteen twenty twenty four, revised eight twenty three twenty twenty four. It be determined the ADU will create, uh, will not create substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Nor will derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw and subject to the condition that. All of the exterior lighting will be downcast, dark sky, dark sky compliant fixtures and. All the roof runoff will go to a dry well on site.
Second.
All right, who's in favor, Ms. Dwyer Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Swaim.
Aye.
And Chair both aye.
Thank you very much.
Hey, congratulations.
All right.
Hey.
So I think.
Yeah.
We have, um, the administrative business?
Yes. Um, so I don't know if you're, um, you all.
Oh, you know what? We have to continue the.
Oh, oh, yes, you have to.
So seven ten PM, the application of Torres Investment Holdings. CD two eleven Property LLC for a special permanent site plan review under zoning by law section seven two, seven seven, eleven six, eleven eight, three hundred and three ten Baker Avenue. The applicant has requested that we continue the public hearing without discussion to January ninth, twenty twenty five. Do we have a time?
Um, seven, seven, seven sounds good. Sounds good. I, I, so you moved second.
Do you have seven? Oh, you're not allowed to move, right?
Oh, he's second, okay.
All right, all of you favor, uh, this, uh, Dwyer Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Swain, hi, and Chair for both sides as well, so. Now we can move on to administrative business, um.
Okay.
Fifty nine Walden, um, I don't know, um, you all remember, this is the, the old bank. Uh, that Keller Williams, um, purchased, proposed the, you know, a new second story rehab of the whole entire building. Um, and, um, things progressed, uh, at, at one point, so the. Um, it, it's been, bas- basically been an archaeology endeavor. Um, they started the demolition, then found the, um, interior brick, the brick walls. Um, would not support the second story and roof, ended having to demolish, um, everything down to the. Um, the foundation, which is kind of like a split level house, it's, it's. Exposed a little bit, but then it's almost, you know, of, like a walkout out the back.
Hmm.
And so that was the, the first issue, uh, the second issue was that. The front of the building is ADA accessible, the back of the building is not. Um, they, um, would not be able to get a waiver from the Architectural Access Board. They're required to have two accessi- means, two accessible means.
Hmm.
Um, so it, uh, will require them to, um, re. Reconfigure the interior and actually put in a chairlift elevator.
Hmm.
Um, which, um, the cost is, um, substantial.
Hmm.
During the public hearing, the discussion, um, as, you know, as the town moves forward. Um, they had talked about putting in an EV charging station in the rear of the property.
That's it.
Um, which, um. None of their, um, the realtors that would be working out of this office, um, are even there long enough. To plug a car in and charge it.
Hmm.
Um, and, um, the clients that come there are also not there long enough to plug it in, so the request is. Um, whether the board would agree to allow the EV charging to. Not be installed and help offset, um, the unexpected.
Hmm.
Very unexpected cost to have to put in the, um, the chairlift in the building.
I remember we, there was parking relief, right?
Um, they do not, they do not need parking relief, so, so.
What was it, some question about like?
They had, they had to reconfigure the parking, um, and they pulled. Currently, the parking wraps all the way around the back, very close to the milk brook, and so they were required to pull out, um. Pull out that pavement and, um, do a base of removal and revegetate.
Oh.
The milk brook, so, um, it was, it was not, it was not insignificant, the, you know, the improvements that they have made.
Hmm.
Overall to the site, not just the building.
And we don't need to approve any changes to the building plans themselves?
No, cuz that's all interior.
It's all interior.
Yeah, um, they, you know, they looked at the potential to do some type of exterior, um, but that cost was. Even more significant, but then it also means they would have to go back to the Historic Districts Commission, they would have to go back to the Natural Resources Commission. Um, and because they've pulled things out of that, um, twenty five foot no disturb and. Um, you know, it did move quite a bit up closer to the building that is currently there, so, um, it's. So that's, that's the request.
So, do you need a motion from the board or to remove the power?
Yeah, I just think an acknowledgement of the board of, you know, of the situation and, um, you know, hmm. Grant this administrative amendment, um, stating that the, it does not need to be put in.
I think that's fine.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Good, um, but I move that we make that administrative amendment.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
I second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, now we have our, a lot of meeting minutes, which I think hopefully all of us is.
We had, I had reviewed the meetings I was at, and they all looked great.
Yeah, yep, I read the moment.
So you didn't just make one big move, except the, I, as, as written.
I move to accept the minutes from January eleventh, twenty twenty four, March eleventh, twenty twenty four, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. April eleventh, twenty twenty four, July eleventh, twenty twenty four, September nineteenth, twenty twenty four. And October tenth, twenty twenty four, as written.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Swain. Aye.
Perfect, here we are.
Any other business?
That's it.